It is July 6th, nineteen, nineteen, twenty twenty-one. And I just want to say, welcome back to live. Call the order with pledge of allegiance. How about Mr. Hulker?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
With that, Volkha, please. Rebecca Shambles?
Here.
Mark Holcomb?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Mr. Beaver?
Here.
Deborah Odd? Absent. Miss Beth Scott?
Here, President Michigan Michael.
Gloria Thompson?
Here.
We have one. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this form to discuss job-related topics. Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources. The Board uses what we're making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. With all that being said, do we have any comments that were terminated this term? Yes, I have. Alicia Robina? Right.
Good evening. For months you've been inviting us to stand down on the building issue. To my surprise, you managed to put the kids first and get past the first step of the battle. For that, I can tell you, thank you. Please, don't make me regret saying that. So, congrats. I can tell you some slack on that issue ground. But there's a bigger issue that is just flat unacceptable and needs addressed immediately. That nasty, sometimes spoiled, dog food this district calls lunch. Lucky for you, I brought you some to see. Would you like a way? Any of you, just tell me, would any of you eat that garbage? I have students messaging me pictures of lunches. I asked the parents here today to listen closely to what I'm about to describe after lunch. First lunch was one bag of burritos, one small nasty processed, maybe cheese dough, one small salsa, still confused on why they got salsa, one nasty bag of carrots, slimy, and ranch pot. Where's the protein? Is this healthy? Are we paying attention yet? Here's lunch two. Oh, look, burritos. That's a shock. I'm seeing a trend. Someone really likes burritos around here. And orange, one good item. Broccoli in a bag, always slimy. And this anytime crap in the front there. Inside it, some vile so-called meat and nasty hard processed cheese. That's a sample I brought for you to see. Again, any of you eat that? I emailed the superintendent regarding lunches multiple times. I did because a lot of students rely on these meals every day. His response? Who sent me the pictures? That was his concern. Of all things, he was concerned and worried about who sent me pictures of this dog food we are feeding these students and not worried about that instead of who sent me pics. The students trust me. I will never oust one for the super to go embarrassed or try to lie if we cast an issue. I responded telling him, I won't tell him. Also asked him what his plan was and got no response. Yesterday, I sent a follow-up email asking for an update. His response is words exactly. We appreciate your concerns and are dealing with them. That was it. Well, isn't that informative? People were paying him to not do this job. Here's today's lunch. Milk, some fake peanut butter sandwich, bag of celery carrots, some brown, and always slimy. One ranch pot, man, that is spot with that ranch. And a cheese stick, the only edible item in a whole bag. Do you think they not get real meat anymore and real food? Again, would you eat it? You're funded by the state for meals, no excuses. Before being superintendent, you would have looked into watching students being forced to take a lunch. You know, so the school gets paid. But then you watch them find the nearest garbage can to sit in this corner and toss it. Didn't care, but snack bar was booming, and that's okay because again, the school makes a buck, right? So, kids are filling up a flinging hat garbage and cookies. Is this acceptable? The super is known for years about the lunches, and here you still are. We gonna hold them accountable yet? Today, you're speaking for those students to reach out to me. They were afraid of backlash when I speak here today to you. And if you're being told it's not that bad, the pressure to drop it. But I'm not afraid. Please hear that.
Do we have anyone else? Thomas Smith?
Can you hear me? I'm Tom Smith. This is my opinion. A special board meeting for trustee mediation on June 15th was revealed. It was a summary of what we've witnessed seen uncivil trustee conduct in several episodes over the last few years. There is overwhelming evidence in history that clearly identifies the problem. This problem does not benefit the district. Accusations without evidence, petty gossip, and self-serving behavior that distracts from the problem doesn't work. Attempts to shift going to the superintendent doesn't work either. Don't blame others for your choices. Trustees like the public are responsible for their own conduct, not somebody else. I think incivility from some trustees in the past has contributed to the problems that the district is dealing with now. It's a distraction, not a solution to the district's issues. Some problems could have been solved years ago if these trustees chose to work together in an open and respectful manner. This behavior should not be accepted by the Board. If the problem is not resolved, I don't see how the Board will successfully sell a bond to voters even with clearly identified needs. I think it will fail. I'd rather see the district be absorbed by another community than much more dysfunctional incidents substituting for public representation. And as the mediator said, the Board members need to do their job and stop trying to involve themselves with the administration's responsibilities. The mediator said that again and again, Board members need to do their job and stop trying to involve themselves with the administration's responsibilities. I'm sorry, missed that. You must find a way to let go of past unhelpful behaviors that move forward. Unwillingness to do that is not an option. Shifted in blindness and me either. Incivility is the only responsible way to conduct the district's business. Mr. Urban said the Open Meetings Act requires boards to act with good faith and fellowship. Most trustees have done that to varying degrees, but it's a real struggle for some. Mediator's observations and conclusions clearly back to civil. He identified accountability for problems and heated solutions that were objected to or deflected by some trustees. The Open Meetings Act is not a platform for plain gotcha. Its basic standard of civil behavior is clear. Those trustees who choose not to meet that standard should not be on this Board. The community deserves that. It's simple, really. If you want to be taken seriously and not be laughed at, just act like an adult. I commend those trustees who are making an effort. I'd like to see a strong effort from all of them. We can disagree without being mean or ugly if we choose to. That should apply to everyone. Thanks for your attention.
So, moving on, Superintendent Mr. Hart.
Thank you, President Hulker. I just have a couple of things. Just want to report out on the carnival that we had on. It was a success in spite of the weather. We thought we'd do it clean out, but we managed to fundraise a little over $10,000. After all the fees and expenses, we still managed to make a little over $7,000 in fundraising. But our objective was not to make money on this event. Our objective was to provide an atmosphere for families to come together and celebrate and spend time with each other as we're coming out of this pandemic. So, we had no real incidents. I just want to thank the people that helped. Their help was pretty much appreciated. And then the other thing that I have, President Hulker, is I want to acknowledge some teachers who have received their tenure. So, I just want to applaud them. We will have certificates for them.
I don't mean to, can I interrupt for just one second? I pulled up the Facebook Live video just to see, and unless you're in the microphone, nobody's hearing you on Facebook.
They can hear me?
No.
I cannot hear you too well.
Okay. How about, how about now?
Let me pull the feedback up.
Okay. Want to recognize Caitlin Snizit for achieving tenure, Lisa Vanderhagen for achieving tenure, Trenton for achieving tenure, Kathmand Hart for achieving tenure, Wild Jerbo for achieving tenure, and Margaret Keltz for achieving tenure. It's a big honor to be able to present them that tenure certificate. And that concludes my report.
Next up, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting June 7th, 2021. Special board meetings, June 1st, 2021, June 11th, 2021, June 14th, 2021, June 15th, 2021, and June 22nd, 2021. We recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes for those addressed committee. I need a maker and support, please. Mr. Holcomb is the maker. Mrs. Thompson is the support. Any discussion? Beth, do you have anything to add?
I'd like nothing, thank you.
All right. Hearing nothing, please call, please. Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
I'm absent.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, approval of MHSAA membership for the 2021-22 school year. Do we have any other information? It's just the Michigan High School Athletic Association annual membership renewal for the 21-22 school year. Do we need a maker and support, please? Mrs. Thompson is the maker, support?
I'll support.
Ms. Beaver?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we call roll, please. Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Next up, approval of the K-12 Career Readiness Team Stipends. Says the $200 stipend for each team member is compensation for after-school meetings, training, and new program, as well as implementation of our K-12 Career Readiness Initiatives throughout the 2021 school year. The stipends came, are coming, out of our K-12 Career Readiness Budget. And to do the funds for the stipends will then be coded to each of the meeting's K-12 account, starting with 101, 110, and 127. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the K-12 Career Readiness Team Stipends as presented. Do we have a maker?
I'll make it.
Okay, trustee Shambles?
I'm present also.
Mr. Holcomb? Mr. Thompson's not sitting next to me, is he? And is there a discussion? Beth?
No, thank you.
All right. Hearing none, call the roll, please. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Odd? Absent. Beth Scott?
She said Beth Scott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is the approval of the account. Robert Half? Other, does Doctor who want to talk about this work? Mr. Abdullah Haad?
Yes. We're asking for approval to use one staff accountant, experienced staff accountant, to support our accounting work. We have had some turbulence and some staff leaving, and we have looming a lot of deadlines right around the corner, including the audit, heavy grant deadlines. If you all follow the grant funding coming from the state, you know, they have given us tight timelines in which to comply and apply for those funds. So, we need some additional support. And we're coming to the Board to ask for one experienced accountant to help us navigate as, you know, we try to study our staffing needs.
And with that, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the use of accounting support services from account times, Robert Half. I need a maker and support, please. Mrs. Thompson? Is there support?
I'll support.
Trustee Beaver? Any discussion?
Anna President, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this, this accounts Robert Half. Do we know how many hours we're going to be using him weekly or monthly and how long?
It's going to be a regular 40-hour work week. We have a lot of deadlines. It's going to be a regular 40-hour work week. We have heavily deliverable, so the audit as of August the 2nd that we must meet to keep the district in compliance. There are other compliance items that the district must meet. You know, there's a lot of needs that the district has, and one of the needs is we have to remain fiscally responsible and compliant. And in order for us to do that with our very small staff, you know, we've had some people leave. In order for us to meet those deadlines, we need the help of account times, just one experienced accountant to work 40 hours a week, at least to get us into August, September, you know, before we can hire for that, that one position. We don't have the time, you know, to hire and train. You know, whenever someone leaves, there's a training that needs to take place, but you have your deadlines that you must meet. And so, we're just caught at this time. And so, we need those services to be successful.
My second question is, we're just in a panel, person correct?
Lawrence is back, but with emphasis on back. You know, when he left, there was a lag. You know, there was work that was not done. So, now we have to catch up. And we also need, not a payroll, because Lawrence is doing payroll, we need the additional accounting position. So, you know, there's a lag when people leave. You know, there's things that are not done. We got to catch up, and we have a lot of holding deadlines. And to be fiscally responsible, this is the reason why I'm coming to the Board for support in this area so that we can be successful.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Volkha, please. We'll start with Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the approval of the resolution of the preliminary qualification of bonds. It is recommended the Board of Education resolve to apply for preliminary qualification of bonds by the State Treasurer for the purpose of financing the school construction description in this application. That said, application is presented to the State Treasurer for action prior to the official election of the Board of Education calling the election on a said bond issue. Resolve that this Board of Education will present a final qualification application to the State Treasurer for qualification of their bonds after this bond issue has been approved by the electors of said district. Read this application and approve. All statements and representations contained herein is true to the best knowledge and belief of the Board authorization, or authorized, the Secretary of the Board of Education to sign this preliminary application and submit, saying, to the State Treasurer for, bleh, sorry, review and approval. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution for the preliminary qualification of bonds. Do we have a maker and support? Mr. Holcomb is the maker. Do we have support?
Chair, I'll support.
Okay, trustee Shambles? And any discussion? Beth, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. Can we have roll call vote, please? Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on. Personnel report to the resources. Mr. Jamie is up.
Hello, personnel report, the team of yours, John Odo. Teacher? Abdullah Haad, I cannot hear. Is that better? We have John Odo, teacher at Madison Elementary. I can hear it. Paige Warren, social worker at Madison Early Childhood, WMS. Resignation. We have Pam Mulnar, classroom supervisor at MES. Data Bustary, Madison High School teacher. Gillette Domsick, teacher at Madison High School. Steve Everey, teacher at Madison High School. Morgan Hinkle, teacher at Madison High School. Carly Kimbrough, teacher at Madison Elementary School. Stephanie Current, teacher at Madison High School. There's one formation under rule, which is Shante Johnson, custodian at Madison High School. And one recall of Scott Stinson, custodian at Madison Early Childhood, sorry.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the personnel report from Madison District Public Schools as presented. Do we have a maker and support?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Beaver? And support?
I'll support.
Trustee Shambles? Any questions? I only got one. We're saying that Lawrence is being backed. Do we have to retire him? How does that work?
It's just the word in, on voter is, for me, is rescinded, so.
So, Beth, did you hear that?
I did not hear it.
Okay. Just so that you heard the answer, because it was never brought to us, his resignation, so we don't have to retire him. Just so everybody.
He just rescinded his resignation.
Okay. And with that, can we have Volkha, please? Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six one. Okay. Oh, five one. Sorry, you are right. I was already corrected. You didn't receive them. Mr. Abdullah Haad was, he's giving me the notice. Okay. And with that, Mr. Jamie is here for the set site list update.
There's so much of copies in the folder. Once we have the copies right here. I cannot hear.
He said they have extra copies that are available for the public that's here.
In this direction. So, you have to be frightened.
This report's also on the webpage. It's under the administrative tab, under business and operations. So, you can be seen there as well. What I'll do is I'll scroll through this kind of quickly since we already went through it in a previous meeting. If you have any questions along the way, just let me know. Start with page one here. This is the administration office. This has been completed. First page here, exposed wiring. Some storage on the floor in the basement. We're pricing on shelving units for that. Weather inspection, inspections have been completed. We're just waiting on the certificate to be mailed to us. They noted a backup cell pump. There is actually a backup cell pump already installed there. The damn for the basement doesn't close. This is being looked into. We're having a quote from certain grid side.
He does.
I'm looking at the phone right here. Probably grid side and possibly the third one there. There's also a leaking pipe in our basement admin office. We're getting a quote from the third one there, grid side, to look at that. Rest of, okay. Rest of pipe, we're getting quotes on that as well. Exposed wiring, this is going to be addressed by the district staff. Wire extinguishers, this is being addressed this week by Conti who's doing our inspection. The data feed wiring against metal, this is being addressed by district staff. Electrical cords and hoses, this has been addressed. Still been fall hazards. We're looking to do a small minor repair to that, but this is something we hope to address with the bond if it does pass. Electrical wiring outside, these are old cable wires. It's going to be removed and secured. We're working on that. Light pole damage, this will also be addressed by district staff. Huge cement pillars, we're trying to figure out how to get that out there. Electrical inspections, I'm going to talk to SETSEC to see if they're recommending for that. Employee training, this is completed through safe schools every year. Extended break facility inspection, SETSEC provided us with a checklist. This has been distributed to all custodians. We have development facility use agreement, so it's complete. Freeze loss prevention program, this is implemented through a SETSEC checklist as well. Refrigeration unit, we're looking into this to provide some quotes for that. Roofing inspections are scheduled. Roofing maintenance, depending on what is needed, we'll get quotes for that once it's provided to us. Search protection, I have to give a quote for that as well. A lot of these are kind of expensive, so just. Surge protection, I have to give a quote for that as well, a lot of these are kind of expensive, so just take some time to get some quotes for these. Other surge protection, we have to get a quote on that one. Routine electrical inspections, this is something I want to look at, when we schedule some infrared testing that SETSEC recommends. Backup generators, extremely priced, that's something we're looking to, unlabelled for it. This is B C C. The cracked concrete, we're hoping to address this with bond funding. Boiler inspections, these are completed. The pump not guarded, these two pumps are not ethically guarded, this is something that the third boiler is working on, quote for me on right now. Electrical panels, third block, this is going to be resolved. Snowblower stored inside, this is going to be resolved. Water point leak, this was completed by a third boiler. SETSEC recommended flammable liquid storage cabinets, we're looking at pricing of cabinets, going to need time, all the flammable liquids are going to be stored elsewhere. This electrical door, we're working on a parts list to get this working again. Remove combustible to the stove, this is completed. Sliptrick and fall hazard, this is also completed. Unit vent here, this was completed. And exit signs are also all tested in the B C C. This is M E S. Boiler inspection is completed. Storage on the transformer, this was completed. Sprig foot pipe leaking, this is going to be inspected by Conti this week. They recommended a backup pump, we purchased the pump this week to get boiler materials needed to install it. Motor and pump running loud, we addressed this on six eighteen. Remove the computer equipment in the boiler room. Door not sealed, this was completed. Block automatic sprinkler system, this was also completed. As where do you block electrical panels? Snowblower inside, this was also removed. Another blocked electrical panel, this is resolved. Kitchen extinguishing system, this is completed, this week by Conti, they do district live test. Same thing with the third boiler, clearance below, this was mentioned to the teacher as well, so I'm working on clearing that out. Fire door block, there's an appointment scheduled with one door that had this fixed, there's a issue with the fire door. Exit signs, these are all fixed. Streaming screen light, this brought to the teacher's attention, it was removed. Kitchen security, this is also brought to the teacher's attention. The cement sill is damaged, this was addressed. Door sill damage is also addressed. On the sidewalk, the building administrator addressed the building staff. Blackened cameras have appeared in the building, the camera is being added in this location. Wilkinson, sliptrick and fall hazards in the parking lot, this is being addressed, we're hoping to use the bond to fix this, sorry. There's also some cracking around the brick, that's something I have to try to reach out to a company and get some quotes on it. The block egresses were addressed. As would the block electrical panels, the block boiler door. Asbestos cover is damaged, it says here, I'll just get a little bit of a filter there, I don't know if it came out, to see if it needs to be remediated. We're supposed to sell one point every week to do that. Snowblower storage inside, this is going to be completed. Boiler inspection has been completed, we're waiting on the certificate. The padlocks have been removed from these doors. Exposed wiring, this is being completed as well. Pressure box covers, looks like it was. Same thing with the other exposed layer, it would be six. Lift which is missing, all of this was addressed. Kitchen extinguishing system, this will be serviced by Conti this week. Same with the hydrostatic testing. Sliptrick and fall hazard was addressed in the kitchen. Fashion wards outside of the shed, this will be completed by the school staff. Same with this sliptrick and fall, try to address this, we can have some steam coating and if not, we have to fix it, we'll be able to find funding. Repair the roof, this is what we discussed before, one section of the roof, this passes life expectancy here. Really can't fix this, it's going to be damaged until the roof is repaired. Rear doors have no security, this has to be addressed with a typo, you can add some contacts, I don't need doors to wear them to the alarm system. This is going on school grounds, addressed with the staff. See the second part of the roof that's sitting here? This door was open, this kitchen security, that's addressed with kitchen staff. The block egresses were addressed in the gym, they were addressed with the teacher as well, the block electric cords and hoses. Exposed wiring, plate is being purchased, exposed wiring in the wall here. Emergency lights and exit signs as well, that are tested. Computers in the gym, this is addressed by the gym teacher as well. Missing cover on the dishwasher, it's going to be replaced. Roof ceiling tile in the kitchen is also going to be replaced. The block egress on the stage is going to be addressed. Lights on the stage, supposed to curtains, this is going to be addressed. Asbestos tiles, these are listed on our asbestos plan. This is the pipe on the next page. Electrical cords and hoses, this is going to be addressed. Ceiling tiles on the next page, but replaced since then. Prevent discoloration, the filters were changed. Block electric fans, they're addressed, and the nervous system staff ordering on computers and labs. This is a different inspection again, this is something we touched SETSEC about. Phil robotics program, they invited us to inventory this, this is not yet done yet, it's going to be. Exposed wiring, this is on our to be list here. Pipe extensions, we're going to get some quotes from Vanski vendors to see what they cost to install a trench drain, it's a bit super expensive, it's something they might just want to remove to prevent fall hazards just for now. These holes around this transformer are a couple of them are bent. I need to call them to see if this is something to be replaced, and if not, I think I know who's responsible for that. Repair fence, this is scheduled for this week. Electrical plug outside will be fixed by school staff. This is the light poles, they're going to be retrieved, once, still getting our look at it, it's actually not going to be retrieved, the line is coming from the T T power poles to this pole, so it's actually. Right, this is Madison High School. The pool area, the motor has been replaced, I still have it inspected, but it's not as good as it is yet. Kitchen security is going to be addressed. Roof leaks, obviously, chairs are ongoing, our tiles were replaced, we're looking to help with the repairs, we're looking to get that bond. Kitchen extinguisher systems, we inspected this week. Block egresses have been addressed. The machine guarding table saw, the saw is not in use, probably through blade, maybe or something, and the whiteboards have been installed.
Do you have a question? I know that they're used to the state law, that anytime you even turn a screw on the boilers, the state inspector had to come out, is that still state law? It's for whatever insurance purposes, mostly.
I've never heard that, you know, I've been wondering about a few repairs, I've never heard that.
Do we intend to have someone come out when everything is done, and have them inspected, and the state is?
Yeah, that's currently going on right now, they're coming out with the. They did the C S D one inspections, I'm just waiting on the certification and results from that.
Anybody else have a question? Beth, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, thank you. I just wondered if Jamie would send the Board of Education a copy of that, because I would have that.
We'll send you one, and we get posted on, have we posted it online? We posted it online, and he'll send you a copy first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
I know this was a lot of work, thank you, and at least we know from this point on, the list will be shorter and shorter.
I just want to thank the custodian staff, they're all very working so hard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, we have the check register approval. Expenditures for the month of June 2021, accounts payable $530,006.43. Wire transfers $458,499.13. Total out $1,358.269. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the monthly expenditures as presented. Do we have a maker and support? Mr. Holcomb makes the motion, do we have support?
I support the President.
Thank you. Trustee Scott? Any discussion?
Chair, I have a question.
Trustee Chambliss, go ahead.
If a trustee misses a meeting, do we still get paid or not? Because we have been, in this check registry, we have a trustee somewhere.
It was oversight, I believe you're talking on this.
So.
I did talk to.
Yeah, she did write it to somebody's intention.
She did, okay.
So the answer is usually no.
That's what I thought, I was just.
I just have one thing. Go ahead, Mrs. Thompson. I did go over the voices again, and we had another nine pages of long distance phone calls again, but I have assurances from Mr. Duro, have that's being corrected, is that correct, Mr. Duro?
Yeah, we're adding, we're adding the four to six digit pin, it'll be done by the time school starts.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Esther Grant, Esther and Grant's updates. So, Dr. Hill, please. Beth, we have some information that I'm sure, oh, this one's, yes, we have, thank you, that I'm sure it'll be done.
Good evening, Board of Education members and community.
Yes, this is her.
Okay. What is being passed out, basically, I wanted to update the Board of this community on our major grant funding. I have provided the names of our major grants, our allocation amount, when the grant ends, and any notes regarding the grants. Starting with the Gears Grant, the district was awarded $102,295, and the grant ends 9/30/2021, and we have applied for it, and I have provided this for what we spent the Gears Grant on. Along with SO1, Madison District Public Schools was awarded $322,372, and then the board has what we applied for this grant funding to, you know, what we're using the grant funding for. All educational purposes, of course. To include supplies, a little professional development, because we are in a COVID environment, you know, supplies needed for us to comply with COVID, you know, cleaning supplies, masks, and things of that nature. SO2, the only thing that M D E has allowed districts to apply for thus far is for our district, $537,330. So we apply for that funding, it's going to support our summer school program, it's just starting along with 23 B funding. But 23 B funding, like the rest of SO2 and SO3, it was called up in legislation. Our legislators approved a large state aid bill to go to school districts, and you all heard about that, and what they're going to do, they're going to tell us what we can actually apply for the rest of that funding. They're going to send us an email, we're going to have a short window, this is part to apply for the funding, so you know, we're internally getting ready, even though, you know, we have some shifts here and there, but we're getting ready, and we will be able to apply for the funding so that the district doesn't lose anything. Because we're going to have a short window, because the state, you know, they had to go on all this COVID money, and if you all have been following it, you know, it has passed, it was pending, but the governor, we don't know what she will support or not support, but I know she's for education, so stay tuned for that. In terms of our Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV funding, that has already been applied for, the end date on that is September 30th, 2021. We have spent most of it, we have spent most of this funding, and we have until September 30th to complete our spending, and then a final report, of course, is due by the end of October, and that's when we'll draw down the final, final funding, and you know, we don't want to lose anything. Title II, Title III, and Title IV, we'll solve it, if you don't spend it all, Title I, we only get 15% carryover, and we are aware of that, and we don't want to lose it any. In terms of our Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV for the current year, normally this application is put in July 1st of any given year, but, you know, Michigan Department of Education, they decided to migrate to what is called an excess system, they weren't ready for us, so they're going to send us an email, and they're ready for us to apply for this funding, so this is different. They've never done this before, but they're changing databases in terms of the database that we. that we use to apply for the funding. But I have provided this board, you know, what we have, uh, applied for, uh, to be transparent. I do have some additional copies if any of the community members want to see what we can apply for, uh, we have them up there for you. And, um, that total is 5.5 million. You see the total at the bottom. And, um, that's that. The money goes to support the classroom, teachers, and, um, just the needs of the district. That's my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. Okay, K2. There has been a lot of questions about the K2 funding. And so I did a reconciliation of the K2 funds. Uh, in short, uh, this funding, uh, started back in 2018 and we received about $36,959 worth of deposits. And initially, we had $49,303 in expenses, overdrawn that account by $12,344.69. So when I started the district, you know, we can't have, uh, the activity funding overdrawn. That means that money was taken that, um, that account wasn't due or the, you know, you're not supposed to overspend any funding because that money has to come from somewhere. So to overdraw that account by $12,344 and it needed to be corrected. What happened in short was, a check was cut against this fund in an amount of $41,958.41. So when I came in, I was able to void the check because I can't leave that account negative. So when I voided that $41,000 check, it left the expenses against this account in an amount of $7,345.57. And so the new K2 balance is $29,613.72. And I have provided this board with the detail and the accounting of this money. And this fund, there has been no activity against this account or on this fund, it's just sitting. So, once again, the balance is $29,613.72. And there was a prior period adjustment of $12,344. You know, that was the, the net result of that check being voided. Because we can't leave that account negative, it means that, you know, money was taken that it wasn't due. So, that's my presentation on that. K2 funding. Thank you.
And we aren't doing anything with that property that we're making?
No, in, in January of 2019, the board took action to freeze that account. Uh, and so nothing's been touched since.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Beth, go ahead.
Can, uh, do we not email that to me, uh, what was given and also the breakdown on the K2 funding?
Yes, I can.
She said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, any question?
Yes.
Um, first, if you want me to take, at least about my way of looking at it, we should, because we have to find out. And secondly, now that the money's just sitting there and the account is frozen, is it possible to reroute it to the?
No, I, I cannot hear the speaking.
Is, is Chambliss gonna read it herself?
Now that the money is just sitting there and there's no activity on it, is it possible to reroute that money? We have underclassmen that currently haven't been able to fundraise for special events when they become seniors. We have classes that could benefit later recruiting special teams for the seniors. Would it be possible to reroute this money or does it just sit in the vault forever?
See, the way that the Student Activity Fund works, whatever that fund was designed to do, whatever that, the reason for that, the reason why the fund was created, you know, you have to stick with that unless that, um, that board that, um, got together to initiate that Student Activity Fund, you know, makes the change to do what you're saying. So, it would have to be that committee. You know, Student Activity Funds, um, that's a special fund and, and, you know, we can't change the identification of that fund.
Do we have any plans to address the money so that it is allocated, you know, that it can be used for the student?
I'll speak to that. I, I feel more comfortable waiting to see, um, I have received a lot of inquiries regarding that account, so I would recommend the board to wait and see and then the board could take action to freeze. So, the, the board has taken action to freeze that spending right now. No activity at all. And that's what I would recommend. We continue until those inquiries are resolved and then we can proceed after those inquiries.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions? We're gonna move on. Uh, GRC report, please.
That would be myself and President Beth Scott. Um, so I forwarded what we have received, um, and also on July 1st, I sent a email to Mr. Gullenhaad that I've resigned from that committee. Um, I can't remember if it was or by Crystal, it's my backup, if they want to pick it up, but I have resigned, uh, but will continue to send anything that I get until someone actively takes over that position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, before we proceed, um, who was the occupant?
I don't know if it's me.
And would you like to, um, on that, is our spokesperson?
Yes, ma'am, I don't know if anyone's.
All right. Beth, uh, well, if you heard, but Trustee Chambliss is going to.
Thank you.
Be our representative. Okay, next up, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee Report. That would be me and, 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 okay, so say what?
It's directional.
Okay, um, they just recently had the, um, Juneteenth at the Civic Center and I haven't heard that on that yet because they have another meeting scheduled for this month. And while we're here, we might as well do parts and rec. We have a meeting set up for next week and I'll get back with everybody on that.
Chair.
Yes, the Trustee Chambliss.
The DEI committee is actually Crystal and I. I think it's a different committee that Wisconsin goes to.
And I actually think, I know there was some confusion as to whether she made it to her board here or not, but, but go ahead.
Okay.
I, I know it's confusing.
It's okay. More information is better. So the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has been really trying since December, January, to get a 21-day challenge out. It's something that different boards will receive information every single day and it would be an activity that takes 15 to 20 minutes of your day and it makes you stop and see things in a different way. It makes you notice things that you might not have otherwise noticed. And they did that with just the delegates for the DEI committees and we came back after 21 days and it was a phenomenal experience that at first I thought was silly, but then within like two, three minutes, it was amazing. So they tried to push out to entire boards and they wanted our entire board to do it, but they felt with everything going on with COVID and everything going on just in the world right now, that it would be too much for the, um, for a board taking on. So, they have postponed it till September, but they are starting a seven-day challenge where it's going to ask us questions that we need to contact staff members in the buildings and see how they see things, how they feel, to kind of bring awareness to situations we might not otherwise know. So I can forward those daily emails if you guys want to see them. They're really interesting. It might be a high-tech experience, something at the grocery store, things that you might not notice. It's a really neat experience, but I will report more on it when we finish it.
And with that, we move on to our closed session pursuant to Section 8C for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed meeting. It's recommended that the Board of Education move to close session. So we need a maker and support. And we have support? Thank you. Trustee Thompson will support Beth if you didn't hear that.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Chair, I have a question.
Trustee Bieber, go ahead.
Do we need to list the name of the bargaining agreement we call session four?
We just have to read that verbiage, but it's for, like bargaining agreement. It's teachers, it's, it's no secret, but it's for teacher bargaining agreement and it's going to, but legally, we just have to read it just, just as in.
Seeing no more questions, call pool, please. Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Motion passes. So with that, we will recess to closed session. We are heading to the media center. 9:30. And last thing on our agenda is for comments. Oh, sorry, we need to call back, sorry.
Beth, can you hear me? Testing, okay. We're, we're starting.
Beth, Beth, we're back in session, so I'll let you go first with more comments.
Okay, that is for, for telling me to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to tell the teachers that received the tenure recognition, wishing you all continued success in your future. Um, thanks to everyone that supported us tonight and hung out with us. Also, I just wanted to mention something to the Board of Education. I'm not supportive of the HR report and haven't been in the last couple of months because I'm, I'm requesting it to add to the HR, to, for the board to go on or have it on the agenda for the August, um, or maybe to add exit surveys to be on the August agenda. I know this has been suggested several times already, but I guess this also needs to be a Board of Education vote, um, to have it put on there for any one of these teachers, staff, um, so we know that employment experience and we can identify trends regarding why teachers and staff are leaving, quitting, um, most effective organizations. Use that survey and exit interviews to gather facts about why staff quit and develop interventions and action plans based on our, you know, data that is collected from these. So I would like to see that put on the agenda. If we could do that, that would be great. Um, and for the August, um, maybe in our board packets, I would like to see the SED tag and, um, Adwina's report in our, um, agenda packets, um, which I requested. I, you know, especially like for me now, it's kind of difficult, but I would like to see us have that in our hand before the meeting. But anyways, that's all I have to say. Thanks, everybody.
And with that, I'll start to my left, Mr. Holcomb, here on. Trustee Thompson.
I'll reiterate everything you just said and everything Beth just said. Thanks for coming out, thanks for staying here in this, in this room. And thanks for waiting until around 11:00 for us to come back.
Next up, Trustee Chambliss.
Caitlin Benson, Ben Harwood, Leslie Rennie Pegabon, Josanna Danzig, Erica Lee, Stephen Emery, Stephanie Current, Jerry Beakley, Scotty Brash, Sarah Mohler, Sarah Cummings, Miss Terry, Miss Eagle, and Miss Kimbrough. Those are just some of the staff members that have left in the last six months of this year, sorry. We have lost admins, teachers, coaches, bus drivers, office staff, maintenance, and more. Our students have lost adults they trust, stability, friendships, and more. Many of our students have loving homes, but not all do. As adults we understand people move on, our students don't though. Sometimes a teacher is the only friend they face a child sees in their day. Sometimes that janitor is the only friend. Sometimes they are the ones to notice changes in our kids. Their impact is so much deeper than just filling the subject or just holding a title. I have requested a discussion on staff morale and ways to improve staff life. I am requesting that we focus on things that are not, and even do a contrast, but that we have an open communication with our staff to try to see what we can do to make them feel like family. Money is only half of why they're here. We, the other battle is to make them feel like they're cared about or appreciated. Because I can tell you that many of the names I just read left our students and tutors, left parents and tutors, left their coworkers and tutors. Second, I just would say, the carnival was amazing. It was awesome. It was so great to be out again. I know it was rough for money, but it was nice that we could raise, we could raise money too. And then the last thing is summer school being underway and the Innovation Lab at Burndale, those are great things. I'm hearing a lot of great responses from the kids. I know my son goes to the Innovation Lab in Burndale and his experience there was just amazing. So I do appreciate all these new resources and outlets we're trying to do for the kids and I hope that going forward into the 2021, 2022 school year, we do even more because those are the things these families will take away and that these kids will hold forever.
Thank you. Trustee Bieber.
Um, I just wanted to say that the Eagle family had another loss. Um, my heart empowers for all the players, coaches, and the families that were impacted. Um, I wanted to congratulate all the teachers on receiving their tenure. I'm so thankful for everything that you guys do for our students. Everyone mentioned this evening has influenced my children and I'm deeply happy to have you. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Dion O'Noe. He did his student teaching with us and the kids loved him. There were a lot of sad tears when he left, so I want to officially welcome him back to the Madison family. Um, like Ms. Chambliss, that the carnival was an absolute blast. I enjoy seeing so many smiling faces and kids hanging out with their friends, it was breath of fresh air. Thank you to Mr. Gullenhaad, Mr. Field, Don Ricky and Gary and everyone else who helped to make that weekend happen. Uh, Mr. Field, I wanted to thank you for your presentation tonight. I know it's actual work and not, I appreciate being with Kevin and Lou, what things that have been, and I'm sure others do as well. Uh, Dr. Field, I wanted to thank you for your presentation as well. Hopefully it helped the community with being kept a loop.
So I guess I would say I want to echo everything said. Teachers getting tenure used to be just needed to show up. Now they're rated and everything, so it's not, it is a thing. It's not just, you know, a date that they hit. So it is a good deal, congratulations to them. Um, and the only other thing that I, I know is a concern for all of us sitting up here is, yes, we will be addressing the mood. Everyone's concerned. It is noted and it's being worked on. So those things haven't gone unaddressed. And with that, I'm going to say goodnight. Uh, need a motion to adjourn in a second. Yeah. How about a few of the support, Beth? Mr. Holcomb's gonna be the maker and, uh, Trustee Scott is going to be the supporter. And any discussion? Hearing none. Call pool, please. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott? Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes. And because I have one, I'm ready to get it. Good night.